... commission meeting to order, would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Wait a minute, we gotta get over this. Did I steal it from you? Bottom, that works.
Edward Keller.
Here.
Whitey Simon here. Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Harold Bane.
Here.
Mark Borshart.
Here.
Tom Cozel.
Here.
Robert Muesli.
I haven't heard anything. Anybody else?
No.
I haven't checked my, uh...
Keith Bell.
Here.
And Kathy Schmike.
I am here. Thank you, Whitey. Item number four is amendments to agenda. There are none. I'm gonna move on to item number five, approval of minutes.
So moved. Support.
Sue, did you get that?
Did you get one?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Minister approved. Item number six is new business, and under new business, there are two items. There's item A, which is a public hearing for 9703 North Channel. Excuse me, North River Road, sorry about that, and then item B is a site plan consideration. Chris, would you be kind enough to read the rules for the public hearing and public comments?
Number one, all comments must be made through the chairperson. Comments directed to the applicant from the audience are prohibited. Two, individuals wishing to speak shall have time limits, three minutes for each member of the general public, and six minutes for a spokesperson of a larger group such as a subdivision association, condo association, business group, and similar groups. Three, anyone wishing to speak is asked to sign the sh- to sign the sign-in sheet provided. However, anyone wishing to speak will be given the opportunity. Four, each individual will be allowed to speak once. It will be the chairperson's decision as to whether rebuttal comments will be allowed. Five, citizens may appoint a spokesperson to represent those who agree on a point of view, and six, public comments on a specific public hearing request should be made during the public hearing for that item.
Thank you. Okay, I am going to open the public hearing for 9703 North River Road at 7:04. Planners? Eric?
So this... Thank you. So this was introduced at last month's meeting. It's a .16 acre parcel with an existing single-family home immediately north of the vacant Big River Grill. To the north is R1, and to the west and south is C2. As you can see on the second page of the review memo, the requested R1 district is less intense than the current C2 district since it is a residential district, and the minimum lot area is 18,000 square feet, down to 7,800 square feet if water and sewer is present. The requested R1 district is a higher-density, single-family district that permits one-family dwellings on relatively small lots where public water and sewer is existing or planned, so the proposal fits in to the intent of that district, and we're asking the applicant verify if the residence is connected to public sewer and water, given that the .16 minimum acreage is at the .17 for the district. The master plan identifies the area as waterfront residential, which supports the rezoning to residential. The waterfront residential district has not been implemented in the zoning ordinance, but the master plan suggests density is equal to the R1L, which is 15,000 square foot lots. So we're recommending approval based on the three items noted in the review letter.
Thank you. Is the applicant here by chance?
I'm here for him.
Okay.
I'm co-trustee, Pam Satterly.
Do you want to add anything?
Um, it is a double word.
Okay. Did you get her name? Could you restate your name and spell it, please?
Pam Satterly, S-A-T-T-E-R-L-Y.
Okay, and you said it is hooked up to sewer and water? Okay. Anything further you want to add? No? Okay. Turn to the public. Anybody who has a comment regarding this particular public hearing, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Okay, I'll ask one more time. Anybody in regards to this rezoning public hearing? Want to make any comment? All right, I don't see any hands raised or anybody approaching the podium. So, um, at this particular point, we can close the public hearing, which is now 7:08. And then commissioners, what would you like to do? More discussion, whatever?
Question?
Sure.
Uh, to the co-applicant, I see Brian Lane is registered as the practitioner's name, correct, and you're a co-owner. What does Mr. Grosso, Phil Grosso, have to do with it?
Oh, he's a real estate agent. We had the house up for sale and we went through the process and then found out it was sold commercial.
Does he have any claim to ownership to it?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning of 9703 River Road from C2 small business to R1 family residential district.
Support.
Okay, Whitey.
I got that, and I have that was... Tom.
Quick question, do we need to include the parcel number in the motion?
Can revise the motion and add parcel ID 74-14-487-0034-000.
Thank you. We're gonna get Whitey to just call it.
And I re-support.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to approve the rezoning from C2 to R1, parcel number
Everybody understand? Roll call, please. Wait a minute, hold on. Edward, you gonna say something?
Well, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't realize the different parcels over there. And I don't remember what mine is. But I'm right, I'm between him and the restaurant, and I don't care what he does with it so long as whatever we accomplish here tonight doesn't affect my easement over there.
I don't believe so.
I wouldn't, no.
No, you still have your easement.
Because you're only dealing with the parcel.
That's the only thing I'm concerned about.
Okay.
If he wants to go change his, that's, that's fine.
All righty. Do the planners agree with what I decide?
Yes, there's nothing in the application regarding changing that, and it wouldn't be this process anyways to modify an easement, so...
Thank you.
I was referring to this property over here.
All right, roll call, please.
Keith Bell.
Yes.
Edward Keller.
Yes.
Whitey Simon.
Aye.
Christine Holcomb.
Hi.
Harold Bane.
Yes.
Mark Borshart.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Muesli.
Yes.
You're welcome. Kathy Schmike.
Yes, thank you. All right. So planners, then the next, as far as rezoning language, does he get... Go ahead.
That is actually a recommendation, too.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. I just thought about that after we were going halfway through this, sorry. You okay?
I wrote too quickly.
You wrote too quickly, all right. All right, thank you. Item number B is site plan consideration for 5309 Point Trumbull.
So this is a .4 acre parcel with an existing commercial building, Zone C2. It's a 1,975 square foot building formerly, formerly Genuine's Tobacco Barn. The applicant's proposing a 900 square foot two-car garage addition to the rear with parking existing on the side to be restriked and landscaping to be added. There are two issues with the proposal. First, the applicant should verify the height of the roof addition to the rear of the building, and second, the applicant should clarify what the proposed interior building alterations are and provide details on the intended use. On the second page of the memo, you'll see a comparison of the C2 district, the site's currently in, with the proposal. There are two issues noted as far as compliance with the district. First is the building height for the addition, which was just discussed, and second, the side yard setback to the east for the proposed barn is six feet or 10 feet required. The existing structure is non-conforming, though the addition would not be any closer to the side property line than the current building setback of .7 feet at the closest point. The addition would not be set back a minimum of 10 feet per the zoning ordinance, and we're recommending a variance from the ZBA be required. The garage would be set back six feet from the property line. There are two other zoning compliance issues. First is vehicular access and circulation. So this is substantially existing on the site, however, we're recommending that you determine if this existing condition is acceptable as far as parking space layout and maneuvering into Point Trumbull Lane, if those are acceptable existing conditions. And second, the application states that no new signage is requested, and we're asking for clarification on if the proposed pole sign will be reused or refaced, as would seem likely, so we're asking the applicant to clarify that.
Thank you. Is the applicant here by chance? Would you like to come forward and add anything to what's already been submitted, or respond to any of the items that were in the July 18th?
Yeah, the walls are gonna be 10-foot tall on the garage that I'm asking to build. There's gonna be no interior change, it's just a building of the garage to the back. The, I'm using it as a private office. My brother and I work together, and we're just gonna use it as an office. We have no customers coming and going. Other questions? Oh, the sign, I'm not doing anything with the sign. I may put a coat of paint on it to make it look better, but that's it.
This, this new structure, it's gonna be six feet, is that what I see off the...
Yes, the approximate six feet.
We're really, we're really looking to get 10, right?
To get 10, you'd, it would move the garage four feet beyond the existing building towards Point Trumbull Lane.
Or you take four feet off it.
That'd make it difficult for putting our vehicles in there.
Yeah, I haven't been in there, but that would still leave you 26 feet.
Looks like you have some bigger vans, according to the diagram, or...
I'm sorry?
You have larger vehicles?
Uh, we have two trucks. You mean for the eight-foot height?
So we need 10 feet, planners?
Yes, that's required, even though the structure is existing, non-conforming additions and alterations are, they have to meet the code at the time they're proposed, so we're not sure how the existing building was allowed to be 10, 17 feet, but additions or new buildings have to meet the current set max.
Unless they went to the zoning board of appeals.
Right, that's what we included in our letter, was that would be...
That's the other option.
What's on the, what's on the other side here? Next door. What's on the, on that side, the, where the non-conformance is? What kind of business structure, is there anything there?
No, it's a vacant lot. It's a lot, but the house is at the water's edge.
It's way up front?
There's this town that was in front of us.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It wasn't included in the packet, but it was in front of us tonight. We do. Or less paper.
Is there room enough to reposition that garage with the current dimensions and build a walk-through if you want to attach to the garage? Face it the other way? Although it is 30/30, so...
Yeah.
You'd have to relocate it.
Relocate it to where?
The garage.
To where?
I don't know. In order to meet the ordinances. You have enough property in the back?
Yes, there's enough property towards the back, but there's still the same distance, the lots, the same width all the way down.
If you read item number four in our planners, it explains what the difficulty is.
Yeah.
The non-conforming building, which you've obviously read, right? Yeah, so that's what they would need the variance for.
Right.
And I'm not saying they would get the variance from the ZBA, but that's one option.
But somewhere, someone in the future could go ahead and just extend it, keeping that six feet all the way down the lot if they wanted to, right?
There's that potential, I suppose.
Yeah, but every addition would have to be approved by the ZBA.
Correct. Are we correct on that, Eric? So any additional pass this addition would have to come back and ask again, and...
Okay.
And again, go back to the ZBA, actually, too, so... But if they don't get passed the ZBA, we're back to square one, right? Okay.
Wouldn't they have to have approval from the ZBA before we vote on anything?
That's what I was wondering. And you haven't gone on the ZBA yet, correct?
No.
Okay.
Didn't know I had to, until I received this.
Gotcha.
That way I don't have to reapply. Site plan application is still on the door, and they can just pick up the next planning commissioning, if you table it rather than...
So realistically, to not cause any more cost factor for the applicant, we should let them go to the ZBA?
They apply, table it.
Table it. Okay.
I have a question. Could we, if we so felt move to approve it with conditions that the zoning board approved? Not, like, if the, if, that the only way that this could be built at that size is if it goes in front of the ZBA and the variance is approved?
You mean like tentatively approve it here?
Mm-hmm.
Conditional, yeah.
Conditional, thank you. Conditionally approve it here, if that's what we wanted to do with the appro, with application to ZBA and...
Correct.
The grant, if they get a granted of variance. Is that what you're referring to?
You wouldn't see the site plan again, so that would be the only issue, is if you felt like strongly as far as seeing the revised site plan, you wouldn't get a chance to review the revised site plan if the variance wasn't approved.
Does it matter? Does it matter cost-wise for the applicant, which way we do this, if we send him to the ZBA first and then back to us? It's not like he's got to reapply, correct? And then that gives us a chance to re-review or re-review the...
The only thing I was thinking is, when's the next ZBA meeting?
August 21st, I think it's.
Well, and then, and then, if we passed it conditionally on that, and then the ZBA gave them the approval or disapproval, if they gave them the approval and we had, had it passed conditionally on that, then he can go on with the construction instead of having to come back in a month here, and so...
It would only be a week. If he went to the ZBA for the, the middle of August, then our meeting would be the following week.
Okay.
So it's only a week delay.
And we could potentially just make, plan this for their August meeting to come back, so we wouldn't be delaying you, it'd be a week's delay if we did it that direction, but it wouldn't be costing any more money.
Okay. What if I did the garage at, you suggested 26-foot deep?
Oh, then you wouldn't have to go through any of this.
And then extended the garage out, put the extra four feet on the end, so I have same square footage, and it's just a longer building and not as deep. Would that be acceptable?
Eric?
Yeah, he's, he's, has room to go to the rear, to the south side, so...
Would he need to redo his site plan, then?
I think he's in...
He would need to at some point. Whether or not you, you want to see that, it's up to you. He would need to redo that prior to permitting.
Then that would eliminate the ZBA hearing on his part? Because that's not a guarantee either.
No, it's not.
He might have to do that anyways if it's not approved, so...
He just took all the pain right out of it.
We have constraints on us because of where it's located.
If he revises the site plan, do we want to see it before we approve it, or do we do a contingent approval?
I think we should look at it, don't you think?
I would think so.
Is he, is he, is he still asking for a variance?
No, if he's gonna shorten it up four foot, add it to the back. So either way, nothing is happening until next month. He just wants to see a revised site plan. 26 by 34.
Okay.
I think I'd still want to see it. Because there's the issue of the height is not on the site plan.
Yeah, the applicant can choose either way. He can, he can decide how he wants to go, whether or not he wants to apply the ZBA or not, or just revise the plans for next meeting, so you could leave him that flexibility with the 30-day tabling, whether, so he has some, has the option to do whichever.
Is there an additional cost for revising the site plan?
Not as, I'm not sure we have to check, not on our, and not because it's within six months, but we...
Sandy's not here right now, because I'm hesitant to cause the applicant any more.
Well, there may be a cost with the ZBA application.
The ZBA, but I mean, if he does, like, what Tom just suggested, I believe it's Tom.
Yeah.
And you said to reconfigure it.
Yeah, so make it a 26 by 34 instead of 30 by 30.
Right. I'm trying to remember if there's, because he has to go back then to the building department, correct? I think they'd have to pay some sort of an additional fee.
I don't believe that, I believe there is a re-review.
It's a re-review fee?
I think that's the standard for all applications that are reviewed multiple times.
That's what I was thinking.
But that being said, it would probably be more cost-effective to do that than to go for a variance with the ZBA, which again...
Yeah, I'd rather not go for a variance.
And it's not a guarantee that you would even receive the variance based on the criteria.
It's a chance.
It, it's a, it's a 50/50 at best.
I understand.
And I think if there's gonna be an extra cost incurred, just in my opinion, I, obviously we can't tell you what to do, but I would say, if it were me, I think I would revise the site plan and pay that smaller fee, if it were me.
I agree.
You agree with Eric?
Yeah, we're not telling you what to do here, we're just talking amongst ourselves.
You're speaking my mind, thank you.
I was talking to these people, but you happened over here, so...
Hey, you're on CP, maybe.
So would we make a motion to...
Hold on, just a second. What's... You okay, Eric?
Just as far as if you want to see the revised site plan or not, that's what you're...
I think I'd like to see it.
How about the other one down there?
You want to see the revised site plan?
Because wasn't there another issue besides the variance, the setback, or something like the height of the wall that's not on the original site plan?
Yeah, there are 10-foot walls.
Scribbling on the print.
Yeah, you want to just mark it up on one of these?
It wasn't necessarily the 10-foot wall, it's the roof height.
Oh, it's, okay. It's a 412 pitch on 10-foot walls.
And if he's going to a, and the... Roof pitch is matching the existing, which would run the same direction.
I don't know what the exact dimensions are, but the garage would be somewhat shorter in height than the existing building. I believe the existing walls are about 14 feet on the existing building.
But again, it's the roof height, not the wall height.
Yeah, and it's gonna be the same pitch, so everything, the garage will be lower than the existing building.
It's gonna be 10 feet.
Does that need to be, Eric, does that need to be on the revised site plan so that we know what the pitch is? So, yeah, I think I'd, I think I'd like to see the revised plan showing this as well.
Well, at this particular point, someone can make a motion if you, we'll see where we go.
Recommend conditional approval.
No.
To receive the revised site plan based on the conditions that were presented.
Would we not table?
Should we disable it?
Pending the revised site plan.
Okay.
Good. I'm asking, I'm not motioning. Make the motion. Okay, motions, motion to table the site plan review pending the revised site plan... Yes?
With the, and delineate the changes, how's that?
Right, showing the changes.
You want to enumerate the changes you're looking for, please? Come on.
The new footprint dimensions along with the roof height. I think I covered everything. Did I miss anything? Oh, for 5309 Point Trumbull, 74-14-433-001.
Roof height and?
New site plan.
New site plan with the garage. Footprint dimensions. Yes. He said roof height.
He's gonna reread it back to us so we make sure we know we're voting on.
Table pending site plan review.
Yeah, updated site plan, showing the footprint and the...
Are we ready? Commonly 5309 Point Trumbull.
Right, yeah, it's gonna be like, you know, this.
Everybody come in. To the table. Pending site plan, removal of roof height and dimension restated on 741443300, commonly known as 9390 Point Trumbull.
5309.
5309?
Yes.
5309.
Removal on there?
He did, hold on.
Removal of height.
No. Delineation of the height.
Delineation.
It's a $10 word.
I can even spell it, I'm quite outlawed.
Thank you, Tom.
I can even spell it.
Again, to recommend to table pending site plan delineation of roof height and dimensions restated on 74144330001000, commonly known as 5309 Point Trumbull.
Okay.
That was who, Robert?
No, Ed.
Ed. Oh, you did. Ed and seconded?
Ed seconded, I made the motion.
You made it?
I made the motion.
Come on, wait.
I just asked who made the motion.
It's been a long week, apparel.
Yeah, I just came out of my crawl space.
Are you waterlogged, is that the problem?
That was Keith, then, right?
That was Keith.
Ed, Keith made the motion, and Ed seconded.
Okay, I think we're on the same page. Sue, are you okay over there? You're okay.
You got it, too?
She's laughing.
Yeah, I'd be laughing, too.
Could you handle, like, do the roll call now?
Roll call. Keith Bell.
Aye.
Edward Keller.
Edward Keller.
Yes.
Well, right, the two front ones. Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Harold Bane.
Yes.
Mark Borchardt.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Newsley.
Yep.
And Kathy Schrecker.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll see you about a month.
A month.
Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to item number seven, unfinished business, which is item A, small social, excuse me, small-scale social clubs.
Yes. So as you will recall, you held a public hearing on this item last month. You then closed the public hearing and you postponed action to this meeting. So right now, if, if everyone is clear and remembers the language, I'm happy to answer any questions that have come up, but this was regarding the small-scale social clubs and it was adding language and provisions to give you a little bit more oversight onto those site plans. And this was particularly regarding the clubs with 30 members or fewer. So none of the language has changed. We're just continuing our discussion and your action is, is up to you.
For clarification, the township already allows small-scale social clubs, correct?
It's in our ordinances, it is allowed. Yes.
The language that is proposed is basically to help regulate and govern these small-scale.
It's to make it easier to understand and it gives the planning commission more direction as to kind of what standards you should be looking at. That's where, on the last page of our memo here, we kind of talk about, on page four, it's under number three. So that, that's a lot of the stuff that we've added in there specifically so that any new planning commission down the line, any new member would be, have access to this language, talking about you can cap the hours of operation, parking, access, and all those things. So it's, these are already allowed, this just gives you more oversight.
So to be clear then, if for example, somebody wanted to have a small sales, small-scale social club, before they could do it with the new language, they would have to come before us?
With a site plan.
With a site plan, and then at that point, we can regulate or deny. Thank you.
If I go back to our minutes from our last meeting, because I know there was a lot of concern with the public about if social clubs are, you know, like adult entertainment, that's a whole difference.
Yeah, and this, this is specifically regarding not-for-profit clubs.
Correct.
So as I, I didn't, I know I had to mention at the last meeting, even if somebody came in with a not-for-profit gentleman's club or any of those types, you could, you have full oversight to deny that. But typically, it's my understanding those are operated on a for-profit basis, but.
Does that mean they would have to submit a 501(c)(4) or (c)(3)?
Uh, that's not language that we've included in here.
I know. Those are in general, 501(c)(3) or (4).
That's, that's something I suppose you could request that, yeah, if you had concerns that they were not.
Yes.
Then you, you.
That would be my concern.
With the new language, we could request that if this gets approved.
Would that need to be written?
Yeah, I would, I, I can look to see if that needs to be written.
Would that be restricted?
I, I would, um, I would feel that that falls under the, that you can request information regarding the proposed activities on-site. I, I feel that that falls under that you could, if they're claiming to operate a nonprofit, just as for proof of.
Nonprofit, then they should have a nonprofit license.
Yeah, they would have to be certified or whatever first, right?
Yeah.
And they have to file annual club, uh, whatever it is with the state.
Yes, and nonprofits, you'll usually have those, they have to have them on hand all the time.
No, it, it's not a big problem. It's just that you have to go ahead and make sure that you maintain your status.
Now, is that something that should be included in the new language?
It, it, I don't, I don't feel it has to be, like, like I said, there's provision for you to talk about the proposed activities on-site and then there's that last provision in there, proposed activities, road condition and capacity, other public services, and similar factors. So if you wanted to add that in, I believe we'd have to re-notice and hold the public hearing again because we are amending the language, but I, I feel that this language covers that, that requirement. And if the applicant decided not to supply that to you, then that would be a reason for you to deny them.
The only problem that I see there is that when we're all retired, the new board doesn't know that they ought to do that. So the first two, while we're still here, are going to be a 501(c)(3) or (4) and the next 15 don't have to do it if it's not in the language.
It'd be an ongoing enforcement issue you could bring up. So if you found out that an existing club was for-profit, it was still in the ordinance, you could use that to cite them.
We have, we have this language now and we could always re-do everything and have another public hearing.
Yes, if, if you.
If we're going to be required, if we amended the language for this and we're going to be required to hold another public hearing anyways, we could always approve this and if it doesn't work, change it later and have the public hearing then. That way, we wouldn't have to go through.
If it doesn't become a problem.
Well, that's, yeah, no, that's all.
And I know another concern that the public had was, you know, having them pop up in their neighborhoods next to their homes and I just want to reiterate that the language specifically says minimum lot size shall be two acres.
Correct. So if you're 1.9 acres, they're not eligible.
60 feet next to you or 100 feet next to you.
Well, no, and, and really the restriction of the site doesn't allow because the office is how far you have to wait from your next neighbor and so two acres almost don't do it.
Any more comments?
Was there a price on those two acres?
No, we tried to do that.
No, we talked about the frontage, just particularly how, the way your ordinance is written, private islands technically do not have frontage based on the way, the way your ordinance, so, and that, between that and the unique shape of some of the lots could, could really make it difficult that, for that.
Any further comments? Motion? Whitey, are you ready to bite if you need to?
I have some empty pages, yes.
Okay.
Would that be, uh, small-scale social club ordinances?
Recommend, this is here.
Recommend, yes.
Only ordinance amendment.
126. Just see this right here. I think I got it.
Yeah, Tom, Tom.
Tom's got it, go ahead, Tom.
Tom's all over it.
Wait a minute, I started writing already.
Hang on a minute.
You don't have to write.
You might not have to write. I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning ordinance amendment number 126 and amendment to section 5.02, 6.02, 6.02A, 7.02, 9.02, 10.02, 11.02, 12.02, and 20.38 and the addition of new section 20.54 to ordinance number 126, Clay Township zoning ordinance, Clay Township, St. Clair County, Michigan, to invite update regulations for small-scale clubs.
I don't have that much room on the portal sheet.
Just take a picture.
We have to include this.
Right there, we just cut that out. Paste it. Paste it right out.
Support.
Per the planner's memo.
Updated on 6/19.
Oh, that would shorten that up, wouldn't it? Social. Clubs. Per the memo. 62619.
Memo. 06. Twenty-six. Nineteen. Okay, recommend the drafted language for approval of small social clubs per planner's memo dated 062619.
Right.
Tom and?
Mark.
Mark, again, twice today.
Hey, we're the team.
Wonderful.
It's a recommendation, correct?
It's a recommendation to your trust teams.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're the left, we're the left wing. No, I take that back.
Yeah, I wouldn't go there.
I, I heard too much left and right wing while I was watching the guy and crawling under a small place.
Okay, does everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
Okay, Sue, you all right? All right, go ahead, Whitey, roll call.
Keith Bell.
Yes.
Edward Keller.
Yes.
Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Harold Bane.
Yes.
Mark Borchardt.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Newsley.
Yes.
And Kathy Schrecker.
Yes, thank you. We're going to move on to item number eight, which is planning consultant's report. Gentlemen? Thank you. It's going well, okay. Thank you, Eric and Matt. Item number nine, ZBA representative's report.
No report.
Thank you, Keith. Item number 10, board representative's report.
Uh, just a question, one of the planners, you're supposed to send me something about Pearl Beach. I got 10 emails that I look at, so. Yeah, any one of them would be fine. I have no report, thank you.
Thank you. Item number 11 is chairperson's report. Just a quick couple items. As of July 1st, 2019, continuing through July 1st of 2020, ZBA and planning commission meetings will be videotaped by the township and then put on whatever site the supervisor's going to put them on. So that was one. Um, number two, Sidney Babish sent, I believe to all of us, an update for our records for the Clay Township building, his own official inspector and plan review and the Clay Township electrical inspector and plan review. Just give me one second here. Those are the only items I have, okay? Item number 12 is planning commission members' comments. I hear nothing. So I'm going to move on to item number 13, public comments. If anybody in the public chooses to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Shiloff. I live at 7307 Dyke Road. I'm adjacent to the Blue Horseshoe Island Project. Their seawall permit was issued just after the 1st of July. So this last week, they brought an excavator over there, all right, and start digging up the edge of the island where they've scooped up the edge of the fragmites and some of the dirt and scraped it all back so they can figure out where they're going to put their, their seawall. Well, instead of hauling this all off, when they scraped all this back, they shoved it back into the water. Who knows what is in that dirt, whatever, but they shoved it back in the water. I don't think this is the right way to do this and I just want to make everybody aware of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Any other members of the public? Come forward, state your name and address, please.
Scott Walgrave, 7873 Stark Drive. It's also regarding the island there. I'm just wondering, you know, I, I see the permits been given and that's all fine and dandy, but has anyone thought of the damage of turning that dirt over, if there's any pieces or any chemicals in that water that were going to be, you know, I swim in that water every day. So is, is there chemicals or is anyone going to do a test on that island for toxic materials before they start digging? Because I know for a fact there's stuff buried back there from many, many moons ago.
That's not our department.
I just wanted to bring it up.
No, appreciate you bringing it up.
You know, the lake could be contaminated.
I suggest maybe talk to the agency that issued the permit, how's that?
Try to get ahold of them.
I'm sure that's not the easiest.
I've called Katie Fairchild 103 times without a phone call back at all.
Okay.
And this dates back to last year when they were supposed to have a, by October 31st, an answer about the island. This stems to before then and I can't even get her to call me back. How do I get ahold of them? If I can't get anyone to call.
Find out who her boss is and keep going.
Okay.
That's my boss's suggestion, that would be me. That's only me.
No problem, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to come forward in public comments? One more time, anybody else in the audience for public comments? Seeing no one approaching and or raising their hand, I'm going to move on to item number 14, which would be. Thank you for like jumping in, gentlemen. All right, any, okay. Favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming.